Call the Grand Fork County Commission. It was May 2nd, 2023. State Commissioner Hagan and myself are here and Commissioner Peaches on Zoom.
She isn't yet.
She hasn't checked on yet? Okay, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the correct United States, America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
A comment in one of the motions, I think I was put down for making a motion and it was supposed to be.
Which one?
I'm sorry, looking at the ones that add a Todd Gill into the.
Okay, you make that amendment. Okay, do I have a motion to approve then? With the exception of that, okay, Commissioner Hagan makes the motion to approve second. Mr. Rusted, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried. Approval of the Order of Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh.
So moved by Commissioner Rusted, second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion is carried. Approval of the Consent Agenda, Mule's Employee Status Changes Over Time. Even say Authorization and March Financial Report, anybody wish anything, poll? I have a motion to approve. So moved by Commissioner Rusted, second. Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion is carried. Icon, New Youth Assessment Centers Correctional Center.
Mister, Mister Chairman of the Mission, I do not see anyone with my icon here for this subject, so I would table it.
Okay, we table that. Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. So all those guys in the room.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Adrian Cummings and this is Sam Jensen. We're with the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals, purpose of our visit today is mostly informational, just to inform you guys about what we're doing in the community and some of the programs that we support. Just a little bit, so a little bit of our Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals, so we are a local organization that are mostly volunteer driven, we do have one full time executive staff, this is Sam Jensen, he'll speak a little bit. Essentially what we do is our goal is to attract and retain locally professionals right here in Grand Forks. How do we do that primarily through our three committees that we are chaired by volunteers, social events, professional development and community involvement, which essentially equates to volunteering in the community. We have forty corporate sponsors, these are both public and private entities, mostly businesses in the Greater Grand Forks area, the County Commission or the Grand Forks County is a corporate sponsor, ours at a thousand dollar per year level. And we host thirty-six events each year equates to three a month and reach for our committees. Here's my side, next one is just an overview of our sponsors, these are again local businesses and entities that support us and our efforts.
So then these next two slides that we have, first of all, thank you to all the Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity in this report for you, the opportunity to come in today and talk about the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals and the impact that we have on the Grand Forks region and the county as a whole. So this first graph you'll see is age demographics in relation to the national average, that red line is the national average and then each of those bars represents a different segments of age demographics. So this is back in the 2010 census and back in 2009, a group of interested individuals contracted next generation consulting to figure out a way to get young professionals to stay in Grand Forks and get them more connected. And that report that was conducted found that the flight of young professionals could cost the region over one hundred fifty-nine million dollars over the next four years. So this group of interested individuals among the likes of Amanda Bentout, Josh Reedy, Pete Haga, Michaela Shell, Keith Fons and Barry Wilford. Decided to get together and create an organization that would be specifically designed to try to keep young professionals in the region as opposed to having them move away to Fargo, Bismarck or any other area of other Grand Forks. So fast forward to the 2020 census status stats on the next slide, you'll see that we've made a significant impact in terms of being able to retain young professionals in the Greater Grand Forks region. Specifically the age demographics in between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-nine. And previously, a young professional is considered to be someone within the ages of the ages of twenty years old and forty years old. But in the last year, we went through a strategic planning process that we'll go over in the following slides later in the presentation, we decided that we wanted to be a more inclusive organization. So we no longer define young as young professional in terms of age, but rather mindset, so if you're entering a new phase of your career, you're entering a position of leadership. We believe everybody stands to benefit from getting up with community, meeting new people and establishing more professional connections. So the structure of our organization, I'm the executive director, so myself along with the marketing intern who is not featured on that slide or the sole employees of GGFYP. We're our own separate independent nonprofit organization, five oh one C six and we have, I'm very much supported by our Board of Directors. Everyone on our Board of Directors serves a two-year term, aside from the president of the organization who was initially on boarded as a vice president and then the following year they serve as a president. And then in their final third year of their turn, they serve as the past president and ex officio member of our Board of Directors, non-voting member who's able to kind of guide the rest of the board in terms of how things have been conducted in the past. So some members that we have on our Board of Directors include the President, here alongside me, Adrian Cummings from US Bank. Matt Turner is our Vice President, him along with Kalen Reeder, two former UND student body presidents who served on the Board of Directors for GGFYP. And that's something that I'm particularly proud of, people who serve in leadership positions on the campus over at UND and then wanted to continue on their leadership in the community. And they chose the organization of GGFYP as a vessel to continue to be a leader in the community and I'm very proud of that. Then moving forward, the rest of our executive committee consists of our Treasurer, Secretary and Internal Advisor. We have Mason Benefeld from Cota Banks, Baya Benefeld from the Downtown Development Association, Hattie Alingren from Foster Resilience. And then each of our committees has a chair where they, you know, operate their own committee, put on monthly events and then they report to the rest of the Board of Directors in terms of how many people attended their committee meetings. How many people attended their events in the last month? So each of those committee chairs for social events, we have Megan Edwards with Gates City Bank, our community involvement chair is Alicia Thadley, who's an architect at Witseth. And then our professional development chair is Dan Karski, he works at Fenworks. And then we also have two member at largest who are elected by our membership base. So in November of each year, we'll send out a poll to all of our members, say, your candidates to be on, be a member at large and then they elect the person who they think would best represent what they want to see, the direction of the organization move towards. So our member at large is our Molly Hayne of Fenworks and then as I previously noted, Kalen Reedy. And our past president of the organization is Kevin Hatcher and he's a Business Development Officer over at the Grand Forks Regional EDC.
So what do we do is probably what you're thinking. A lot of what we view our role in the community as is an arm of economic development. Our main priority is to, like I said, attract and retain young professionals. I'm from Grand Forks and I love Grand Forks, it's very easy for me to say here, for some of the folks that might come for other things, whether it's military or UND or otherwise. How do we keep them here and how do we make them interested? We do this through our three committees, so on the screen there's some snapshots of social events. As the name indicates, this is a little more lax, a lot of just getting together, I go to the next slide. I'm getting together and doing things as a group and giving people a place that, hey, you know, there are people of similar age that are interested in doing the same things that you are.
So Professional Development is the next committee that we have, throughout all of our committees, any of the events we have, we see an attendance of anywhere between twenty and forty people attending each of our events. We have a few keynote events like Artsy, which is a social event that's actually coming up later this month, May nineteenth, where we have a couple hundred people attend that event, got our annual launch earlier this year where we had over ninety people attend that event. But on average, we see anywhere in between twenty and forty people attending these events and getting more connected and meeting other young professionals in the Greater Grand Forks region. So the Professional Development Committee, this committee's a keynote event that they have on a monthly basis, would have to be their monthly lunch and learn or dinner learns. And that's where we have an expert on a particular topic come in and talk to our members about the topic that we're an expert on and then we feed our members a free lunch or free dinner depending on the time of the day. We primarily have lunch and learns, but we try to have a dinner and learn at least once a quarter to be more accessible for people who work at organizations that don't allow them the opportunity to leave in the middle of the workday. For example, one of our corporate sponsors is the Grand Forks Public Schools and the teachers just aren't allowed to leave in the middle of the day and go attend events and learn more about investing. So that's why we make an effort to be more accessible for as many people as possible. Some topics that we've touched on recently pertain primarily to personal finance. Some of my favorite events that we've had so far up to this point in the year is we've had a first time home buyers course where we had a mortgage lender and a real estate agent talk to our members about how do I enter the home buy market in Greater Grand Forks and what resources do I reach out to? We also had a first time business owners course where we had a panel of entrepreneurial experts and a host asked them a variety of questions of, you have this business idea, how do I get it off the ground? Who I get in touch with to get the resources to get my business started right here in Greater Grand Forks. And then on the next slide, something that we're doing through the Professional Development Committee with the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals is we've established a community mentorship program. And that's where we match people in the community, our primary target for people to be mentored would have to be students at either UND or Northern Community Technical College. So we had a good blend of people register for this program, of recent college graduates and students at UND and NCTC. We had sixteen people sign up and it's a community mentorship program, not a career mentorship program, so if someone signs up and says they want to be a banker. We're not necessarily going to match them with Adrian Cummings because he's in the banking industry, but we'll match them with someone who we think is socially compatible with them. So the structure of this program is that we want them to meet in person three times and as part of the registration form, the mentee. Says what they're looking to get out of the program and then we match them with someone who we think would be able to help them get what they're looking to get out of the mentorship program. You know, a lot of times it's people just wanting to expand their personal and professional contacts in the region and then we match them with an established professional in Grand Forks or East Grand Forks who has a whole rolodex of people for them to reach out to to get a head starter or a foot in the door in their required industry. And so this is the first year that we've started this program and we just sent out a midpoint survey and we've received some pretty good feedback so far, so we're planning on carrying this on forward. And we see this as a key element of our workforce retention piece of our organization, it's the community mentorship program.
The next slide and the last committee that we have is community involvement, like I said, this is akin to volunteering. If you look at the one on the left, orange bag, hopefully you have seen this on your doorstep. And what we do is once per year, we, we work with some local charities, that's United Way or Northern Rescue Mission, service type organizations and say, you know, are there material, materials or supplies or things that you guys need to better deliver on your mission? And then what we do is distribute orange bags to the community, you know, leave them on our steps, the list of, A, we'd need paper towels, socks, things like this. Then we collect them and redistribute those charities and we just had that event last Saturday and we collected over ten or fifty. Orange bags, which are essentially garbage bags, full of stuff that we were able to pass along, so community involvement is by far kind of what gets its most visibility as far as like service projects and things like that. I believe there's a few more examples, the next slide. You can go ahead.
Then the final piece we'll touch on is we have three committees and then we also have two member at largest who are very active and ambitious about taking the direction and the direction they want to take the organization in. So BAN is one of those examples, that's a communication app that we're using to more effectively communicate with our members throughout GGFYP. So if you register as a member at ggfyp.com, all of our corporate sponsors are able to register as members at no cost to them. As opposed to if you were to register as a member and you weren't employed by a corporate sponsor, that would cost you fifty dollars on an annual basis. So when you sign up as a member, you register in our newsletter, which gets sent out once a week. But then we identified the problem of the newsletter getting less than people's junk folders or their spam folders. So we decided to get integrated with the app called BAN, which is free for us to use and some of my favorite features are the event reminders that get sent out. Saying in twenty-four hours, we're going to be having this social event at this location at this time. And it really kind of eliminates the excuse of anyone being able to say, I didn't hear about the event, so that's why I didn't attend it. So right now we have over one hundred sixty of our members who are on the app and receiving all the notifications and then each committee also has a group chat. So if someone starts getting involved with the organization and wants to be particularly more involved, community involvement committee. You can throw them on that group chat on the app and then they can correspond with other members of that committee to talk about who's bringing the water to this event or who's reaching out to this person, more specific organizing type details. And then on the right there, we have a volleyball league that we've just recently started up, this last winter, we, you know, the two teams for the hardcore league. Don't ask us what our record was, but we had a great time, we realized that there was a lot of people in the community who have the desire to be on these teams, but maybe don't know enough people to be invited onto one. Or maybe they don't want to ask their friends, say, can I join your team? So we just put out the opportunity, the first twenty people to register are thrown on a team and it's a great way to get connected with people on a weekly basis through sport. And we had so much success with the hardcore league that this summer we're transitioning, we're taking our talents to the sand and we're going to be participating in sand volleyball league through the Grand Forks Parks and Rec, so we're very excited about that.
So a little bit about, the main reason why we're here is the slide that you see, the strategic plan. So we recently completed a strategic planning process with our Board of Directors and we got public input and we met with like key, key community stakeholders. And folks that have invested interest in us being successful and we evaluate the organization's strengths and weaknesses, of course. And on screen is a number of weaknesses or opportunities that we identified. The first one, brand awareness, that, that actually is why we're here, our goal is to get in front of community leaders on somewhat of a more regular basis and to inform of the things that are happening in the community. So with brand awareness, our goal obviously is to have as many members as possible because we feel that we at least do a little bit of good, I mean, the more people that we can expose to, the better.
So then the next issue we identified was determining who our target audience is. So then the action that we've decided to go forward with that issue is marketing directly to the HR offices of our corporate sponsors. When we look at who's most likely to attend our events on a monthly basis, it's the people who are able to register as members at no cost to them. So we started sending out video updates to all the HR offices of our corporate sponsors, sending out a video that says, hey, your company, this is an additional benefit provided to you by your company. And here are the events that you have to take advantage of in the upcoming months because of your company's sponsorship of the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals. And the intended outcome of doing that is we want to see an increased higher education student involvement, have a more diverse membership, grow events attendance and gain a better understanding of what events are desired and should be repeated. So other than just the employees of our corporate sponsors, other target demographics are college students, both at UND and Northern Community and Technical College. And then also the airmen out at the Grand Forks Airport space, we view those communities as key crucial elements to help us pitch Grand Forks and hopefully retain them in the region.
The third issue we identify is organizational clutter. One thing I'm, I'm very proud of is that our Board of Directors cycles through often, so we get a lot of new folks, a lot of new opportunities to lead. The downside of this is that there's not really a ton of organizational awareness or historical awareness because if someone is only serving a two-year term and then going on to next opportunity. It's hard to retain their knowledge, so with this piece, we identified that our action is going to be to. Kind of document the things that happen more day to day, give a better idea. For someone like myself who's been involved for three, four, five years, I have a pretty good idea of what happens every year kind of around this time. Now, this time of year we do this and so forth, but the next person probably isn't going to have as much of the organizational awareness. So, so our tenant outcome is to hopefully keep our knowledge base consistent and that organization can keep growing and not having to take the same setback every number of years.
And then the next issue, issue number four is increased involvement within general membership. So that's just, we have around two hundred fifty people who've signed up to become official members of our organization in the last year, so that's people who have registered on our website of May of two thousand twenty-two up until this point. But then the issue becomes, it's great that we're getting people to sign up as members, but how do we get them to attend events and actually continue to attend events on a consistent basis? So the action that we've decided to take on this issue is to leverage the member at large org role to serve as an ambassador for new members. So whenever someone signs up as a new member on our website and get an email with their name, their email address and information regarding where they work. So our member at large will reach out to them, offer to have coffee with them, go out to the community to an event and talk to them about the benefits of being involved with GGFYP and what they've gotten out of it. And that way, when they attend an event, sometimes it's scary to show up somewhere and you're at a place and there's twenty people who you don't know. But if they reach out to a member at large and get to know them and have a personal touch points like that, then the odds of them coming significantly increase when there's at least one person that they know at the event.
The final piece for our strategic plan is internal administration, very similar to the organizational clutter note. Sam is not going to be in this position forever, he will turn over it, he has a ton of organizational knowledge. The other piece of this is that, that being a nonprofit, we don't really have necessarily the resources to hire someone to do marketing and finance and the resources and all these things. So with internal administration, we decided that we're going to try to engage. Third parties are on a contract basis that can, can support us in those ways. We were supported through the EDC, we're, we run to the EDC's HR essentially, but we're our own entity from them. But like Brady Marks, for example, for our accounting services, things like that, that doesn't have to occupy Sam's time and allows us some organizational continuity as far as the stuff that needs to get done. And then again, targets are just engaging more vendors and finding places where we can kind of offload some work from Sam.
Well, thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to come in today and talk to you about GGFYP, we'd be happy to answer any questions and as a reminder, the county is a corporate sponsor, so if any of you guys want to define yourselves as a young professional and attend some of our events, the invite is always open. You can find out information on all of our social media pages and our website.
No, I'm not, I, I really enjoy the YPs, I was part of that group. I didn't even think before your time, but it's a great organization and it's a great way to meet new people, your age, same kind of, maybe you're the same business or not in the market together, so.
Yeah, absolutely, good to be here.
Thank you.
We got more questions. When, when did it start here in Grand Forks?
Back in two thousand eight, around that timeframe.
Yeah, those three of the building in the last few years.
Yeah.
Seems like it's keeping people here and so is the internship program to EDC, I think that's helping too, so.
Absolutely, I, my professional career, so I've been working, you say, now, hilarious, but previously I worked at Landry's in town. I attribute a lot of my professional career to your professionals just through getting to know people and learning of opportunities and, and you know, I'm only one example, but there are numerous of folks that have, have, you know, been able to stay in the community for opportunities that they've gotten through IP, so we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Rouse, Commissioners, thank you for your time, I come to you today seeking permission to continue negotiations on our Perdiem contracts with some of our local providers. In the past six months or a little longer than that, they've been negotiating with the state as well as the federal agencies to get a state contract and the federal contracts renegotiated and updated because they were substantially old and they were in need of attention. On January first of this year, we got the state contract and that is the one that's highlighted in blue there. So that, that's actually February sixteenth and I call that, or I like to think of that as the best contract that we have going right now. That is a contract now, we went from seventy-five dollars a day with the state to a hundred dollars a day for all our Perdiem that we hold for them. We also had what I called an ICC rate intensive custody care. If you recall when I presented to you about two months ago about lack of space and finding ourselves, we have beds, but we can't use them and so forth. This is a result of that, the ICC, meaning that if we have an individual in a cell that we cannot have another inmate occupy that cell, there's enough charge for. Weekend splits, weekends, just like hotels, weekends for us are busy. We don't want weekend sentences, we don't want them in and out, if the state wants to do that, or parole or probation, parole puts them in there for that purpose, there's enough charge for that. We increased our hourly rate from just over twenty dollars, twenty-three dollars with the state to now forty. And the other thing that I really liked about this clause is I was able to negotiate a two-point-five percent annual adjustment into the contract, so no matter what, even when this contract now is seven years old. It won't be a hundred dollars a day anymore because it's going to go up by two and a half percent every year, that's something we've never had. And I tried to do that with the beds, I failed. They would not, they would not consider any clause such as that in their contract, so we do have a new contract with them at a hundred dollars a day and I negotiated it for a three-year contract. I don't want to stick our neck out any further than that because inflation's going to hit us and we'll need to adjust that, I would presume that in three years. The contracts you see in the middle that are highlighted, it's supposed to be green. Are, I don't know if it looks green or not, these are more of our local agencies, the city, Walsh County Trail, Pembina, the airbase here, Emoryado. These are entities that have used us in the last three years, not to a lot, but they have Grand Forks City probably the most. You, well, you can see actually way on the far right hand column, it actually puts us through your average days, so sixteen hundred and fifty-eight days. When you look at what the cost could potentially be, the city of Grand Forks, if we move forward with this, if they average that same amount, it would be somewhere near fifty thousand dollars annually. Subject to how many people they put or we have to put in the ICC, so I would expect intensive custody care and/or weekends could raise it above fifty thousand, that would. Right now, but it would be a small. Walsh County. Trail Pembina and so forth, working your way down to the airbase at fifty-six beds, works out to be a fourteen hundred dollar increase it would have on that. But I bring this to you today to make sure that I have your permission, since we would be dealing with our local entities, our local counties and so forth, and whether or not you want me to pursue this. Seventy dollars and seventy-five dollars a day, that's a very difficult rate to find anywhere anymore. Other administrators across the state, they're all seeking a hundred and. With your permission, I would begin negotiating with these six in green, the entities in red. Those contracts are all eight years old roughly and they have never been utilized or haven't been utilized in a number of years. You can see that Burley County built a new facility of four hundred and fifty beds. Last year, just prior to that facility being built, Montreal County built a new facility and has used us, seven, in Ward County. Extension and they did not use us, I don't know that it's worth our time. Negotiate with those people, but I certainly don't want an old contract out there either, so that they would be told that they. I would recommend, we, we would tell them that they either up, with your permission, up to the new contract or we would cancel that contract. Any questions?
Have a question, so that new rate would be one hundred dollars, would you want to negotiate for?
I would, I would ask that we, we can negotiate for a hundred dollars and in fact, January first of twenty twenty-four to give all these entities sufficient time to budget for. For many of them, it's not a lot, but the city of Grand Forks, fifty thousand, that's a fair amount.
Questions?
It's curious, why it's even, what's your time to pursue those lower five contracts if they're not using us? I mean, wouldn't it be best just to cancel them off and get them?
I should, so that's exactly what my, my, we either cancel them or they would have to. I could send them the new amended contract and if they want to sign it, that they ever need it. Really don't expect Burley or Ward would ever. Their expansion. If you, when you look at some of these other counties where they're located, when we sign these contracts, there was a shortage of beds out there. And now there's been a lot of, a lot of beds built in the west and such, so the, it's not as great that they would transport all.
So wishes of the board? Yep. Wanting to allow. All the others, correct. It said it's also. Second by Commissioner Hagan. Any other comments? Paper, divorce, signify, aye. Same sign. Okay, so I have a proclamation I need to read from their commission here. Impressions, correctional officers have the difficult, not the dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety and well-being of over two-point-three million inmates in our nation's prisons and jails. And over two hundred locally at the Grand Forks Correctional Center. in our nation's prisons and jails and over two hundred locally at the Grand Fork Correctional Center. Their position is essential to day to day operations in these institutions. Without them, it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control. Historically, correctional officers have been viewed as guards occupying isolated and misunderstood positions in prisons and jails. In recent years, the duties of these officers have become increasingly complex and demanding. They are called upon to fill simultaneously custodial supervisory and counseling roles. Professionalism, dedication and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve your utmost respect. The important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves. Correctional officers report to work daily, no matter what the weather, no matter what the crisis, no matter what the hazard, dealing with those individuals society wishes to separate from. Correctional officers report to work on days, nights, weekends, holidays, birthdays, anniversaries, when roads and highways are closed due to blizzards and floods, when the rest of the county is shut down and all times in between. There is no such thing as social distancing, working from home is not an option, and reducing hours or shutting down the facility is definitely not an option. It is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component of the field of correction. In recognition of the contributions of correctional officers to our nation, the Congress, by the Senate, joint resolution one thirty two designated the week of May this year, beginning May seventh, twenty twenty three, as National Correctional Officers Week. Now therefore, I Bob Ross, Chairperson of Grand Forks County Commission, in joint with Grand Forks County Commission. You're right, proclaim and recognize the week beginning May seventh, twenty twenty three, as National Correctional Officers Week. Let's see. Oh, it is the sheriff.
Chairman Ross, members of the commission, great timing. So the first item that I have for you is actually regarding a proclamation recognizing Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Week twenty twenty three by Grand Forks County. Peace Officer Memorial Week falls this year, May fourteenth to May twentieth. It's nationally recognized, May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day. And I've submitted a proclamation that I would request chair signature to recognize that week by the county commission as Peace Officer Memorial Week.
Did you want to read?
You did such a good job, Bob. I can't.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, reiterate on that, we've got the law enforcement memorial that was built down in Optimus Park in the Southside of Grand Forks. And we will be doing the memorial service and dedication of that on May eighteenth at two o'clock in the afternoon. And so any, and everybody is invited to come there. I do believe the the speaker is going to be Drew Wrigley, who is the North Dakota Attorney General. And I'll have some comments because I started this thing about six years ago. But anyway, everybody's invited and.
It will be very impressive.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt a proclamation for the sheriff's law enforcement memorial week? So moved by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Rustad. All those in favor, say by saying aye. All say the same vote, Gary.
Thank you. The next item is is no stranger and probably not as easy to cover, oh, the commission. So I believe it was two commission meetings prior, I came to the commission, maybe it was the last one, I don't remember. Regarding the starting salary for sheriff's deputies, I Grand Forks County. And the commission had asked for a little bit more information regarding costs, what would be some clarification on numbers? So Ms. Olson in my offices worked with Ms. Nelson, who went through some numbers, tried to verify to get as close to exact as they could, barring natural disasters, overtimes, et cetera, on potential cost or what this would would cost to adopt the sheriff's office salary scale with the proposed increased starting salary. And I guess, Ms. Nelson, do you want to just briefly touch on on it?
So like the sheriff said, after the last meeting, you were asked, what is the cost? And so I went back and I got the cost and I verified that with Michelle Olson. And if we did the increase as the sheriff has requested and did it effective July first, the cost with benefits would be just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I was also asked what it would cost from that point forward. So it would cost about thirty nine thousand dollars for a step in twenty twenty four, a three percent step for those officers. And if you give me an idea what you want for cola next year, I'm giving a cost. If it's a one percent cola, the cost would be sixty one thousand three hundred. If it's a three percent cola, it would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars additional next year.
So like Ms. Nelson said, those numbers are round off it. July one, I previously mentioned in the, it's June one was what I was using, but July one appears to be logical to me. That would be six months. It would give, if it's something the commission would entertain, it would give time for payroll to factor that scale in into the their systems, pay systems, whatnot. And it would, it would give other departments time if they wanted to to come forward with anything that they have. So I guess with that being said, I really, I don't have a lot for you besides, I anticipate advertising for our deputy sheriff openings tomorrow. I've been putting off a couple of them for an extended period of time, trying to figure out what salary level we'd be advertising at. And so I I was just, I I didn't know when this would come about, but I can't wait any longer than than today. That's not to imply that need you to rush any decisions. I don't know if you would be rushing the decisions. I've been bringing this up since twenty twenty one.
Yeah, my chair.
I, yeah, rushing a decision, this is about the opposite of the rush, in my opinion. This is literally the textbook opposite of rush. Hundred and fifty from July to January, and then whatever the cost of living winds up being for a year or two is what it is. But I just want to reiterate, I know I've said this from this chair before, but you know, this is, doing this for the sheriff's department does not by any stretch mean that other departments can't get their costs aligned and ducks at all, and we won't just continue forward. I personally want to see this one in the new year based on what Andy has, or excuse me, Sheriff Schneider has put forward with those figures. I believe them to be well thought out. And I also was made aware of the fact that the gap between the city police force and the sheriff's deputies is about to widen substantially. There, there, on Jan one, they're getting a pretty significant bump as well. And so this is going to close the gap for now, but it it's still going to be ongoing because, you know, inflationary reasons and whatnot. And so based on my knowledge of the art of funds, cash carryover dollars and whatnot, I would like to move to go with Sheriff Schneider's recommendations on the salary study with the full intent that we examine the additional departments as they see fit in their chairs. And then they got two months to capture it by July first. And so there's no reason why we can't solve special meetings for something as important as this too. But I know that those those dollars from the federal government, the calculation of how we we even got them is based on deputies that were working during COVID. At least it was a huge factor in it. And so I think this is a long time coming. So that will be my motion.
Commissioner Ruston, I've got some comments at the end here, but do I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Hagan makes a motion. The comment that I have is, I I believe this commission decided to prioritize, I mean, understanding emergency people first, and that that would, I should say, study was supposed to have been done between, I don't know, Commissioner Hagan, if you were with Michelle Field or not, to come up with prioritizing this thing. But in all actuality, this has to come through administrative services first and then to the full commission. I mean, isn't that the way you understand it too, Commissioner?
Yeah, I thought we were going to have a administrative services meeting either today or the last time we covered this. Well, today was supposed to have been for juvenile, but we we have talked about this. Services.
Didn't we do that in the last, the last administrative services meeting that we went to approve to look at the salary?
Do we have prioritizing, but there was no action taken as far as what we're going to do with it. So we need to do that. It has, it's got steps it has to take. Is that correct? Swamson? Yeah.
Chairman Ross, I guess the only comment that I had mentioned on that is I haven't provided any good information for, to be proposed from the scale or where the deputies are positioned. From what I presented to you at the administrative services meeting.
Right.
I've just heard in the last two or three meetings that we need more information, more information, and that's what we keep providing you.
Yeah.
But the base of what I'm requesting with the salary scale to be adopted with the deputies placed where where I, my recommendations were was all presented to you at the administrative services.
But there was no recommendation from administrative services along with, I mean, it was to prioritize. And that's where it has to come from, to authorize it, you know, to the full committee. And we're all part of administrative services, but it has to come from that committee to this one in order to take.
So we need to reschedule and admin services.
Correct.
Make the same motion.
Yep. We gotta follow. Are we actually required to have a recommendation from any committee when there's a, when there's a, an issue like this? Is it required or is it something we just always have done?
Commissioner Hagan, members of the board, I'm not aware of any policy requiring that. That would be the traditional practice of the board.
That's been the practice of the board, I guess, if you want to call it that.
I just want to be repetitive as we're not bringing any new information to advise ourselves on something we've already decided that we want to do. As a policy, but.
Chairman Ross, on that note, I guess, I mean, if the process is going to be, continue to do it the way that it's always been done, if there was no, no formal recommendation being made. If there is an administrative services meeting that needs to be had, I would not be able to provide you any additional information unless there's further requests that you have. We're actually short one person that's sat on all of those meetings. So I don't know if there's anything else that I seen or that that you would need.
I have a question about the the numbers. It will cost the county a hundred and fifty thousand. Now to the end of this, this meeting.
Correct.
And next year, there will be steps involved for some people. Is there any weird more comments to version? Hold up.
Yeah. For the staff that would be about thirty nine thousand dollars and then you add thirty eight, yes, total for next year. In thirty thirty nine thousand, in addition to the two point two million dollars. So give the gap to see. And then if you decide to give a cola, the cola would come first. And what is that one? But I I have three percent up right now and the staff would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars. In addition to where we're at the two point two at the end of twenty twenty three.
Well, it seems to me is we've got, we've got to make some, we've got to make the step. If we have to do it by administrative services, let's have a Zoom meeting tomorrow or next day or something. Well, it's not, it's not policy, right? To do that, we just have always done it that way. Is that correct? This, well, then this is probably one, in my view, that we have talked about a few times. It's not news today and we're not really, not very just taking up something quickly and passing. We've been talking about this. Sheriff Snyder's been talking about it for about five years. And the four or five sheriffs before him did talk about it. So. So I guess I'm okay with with not having it go back to administrative services to have a vote of the four or five of us, since he's not here now. When we probably talked about it enough. Okay, so we get the money out of where?
Thanks to the chairman, members of the commission. There are a few options. I would recommend that you would take it out the care salaries of one point six million dollars.
Okay, so what do we do year after year after year after year?
Well, we usually the valuation increases and you get more per mill.
Okay.
Will it increase? How much is going to increase? We don't know.
Okay, well, you know, I don't have a problem with it, long as we don't have to start taking money out of operations in order to make budgets, you know, to make salaries. But, okay, so got a motion by Commissioner Rustad, second by Commissioner Hagan. We're going to do a roll call vote on this. Start with Commissioner Rustad.
How do you want me to phrase it? I.
That's good. Yeah. Commissioner Hagan. Hi, Commissioner Hagan. And I'm a knight.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay. You just start doing the same with other departments.
Correct.
Yeah.
And you just sort of side, no. Based on the information I think. We did nothing until say Jan one, the difference would be close to fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. It's, it just can't be within ten thousand.
I don't mind saying, I just think it's something that we need to take into consideration, that everybody, every employee is important and we don't want to supersede.
Nope. They give their plan to us and we'll work with them too.
Right, but I, what I was going to say is that we don't want to supersede the operations, the resources either, for that fair and balanced and that variety of look points.
Right.
And the information that we already have and put into it. So Michelle and I have had a lot of work and a lot of hours dedicated to the whole process. And we don't want, I I would recommend to encourage every department to hit their own plan together because I think it's important to have unity across how we're doing this. So it's always fair and balanced that if we ever had to have any disputes on it, we have a documented method process or a documented process for our methods. So that's the only thing I have to say about it. But we have a lot of data.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, here. One thing, you're, it was a few meetings ago, the commission directed human resources to reevaluate every job description of the county and asked every department had to go through the PAQs, thank you. And HR was supposed to bring and score them with potentially new salaries. And then HR was supposed to present those to committee. There were some steps that were offered. I think that I would recommend a little bit of clarification to as what I've heard is, do I have my heads just now bring what they have to the commission? Instead of going through the HR, so just means clarification, that they're continuing on with the process. HR was directed to.
And a lot of that work has already been done and identified with some high look of what was approved this year and still that gap overall that would satisfy a lot of the employees and then having.
Well, we, I think we still want to work with that. I think we still want to get that done. I think Commissioner Hagan.
Yes, I've been, yes, to chime in, we have three places that we have identified, the regraded positions, the people who are at the top of their scale and then the out of market positions. So we, they've been doing an amazing job.
So like for the sheriff's office, this one deputies, we've identified those as out of market, like they're graded fine based on the information that we that we have. We didn't receive any new information to use for grading purposes. We only use what goes on in on our files today. Um, so based on that, they were graded correctly, but they're not in the market. Or, you know, in the market, so there are a couple other questions or groupings that are in the same boat. Um, we can't ignore one or, you know.
No, you can't. No, if it's, I keep more.
And we think it's important to have maybe a game plan of addressing those so we don't have employees upset.
Yeah.
Because it's great that we're taking steps to correct it, but we don't want to make other problems.
Yeah.
Our monsters out of.
Correct.
So I think it's, it's really important that there's some game planning or projecting of what we're going to be doing. So people don't have a lot of questions because we don't have a lot of answers based on this.
I think it'd be a good idea. I said you missed our meeting last week for several reasons, but to meet again and to get that sectioned, you know, how are we going to do this in the next however many months? So, because we had, you have the information. I mean, we're, we're here, we just gotta now say.
And that, and that project was on top of all the other stuff that we're doing. So when we talk about long hours, it's long hours session. And a lot of, you know, thought, thought process, we check in, engaging, you know.
You know, speaking as as the former sheriff and I know how Dan Hill dealt and John Schroder and and Dory Taylor before that. Sheriff's Department, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, nights, weekends, holidays. They don't have the opportunity to stay home and work from home. And it's very demanding. So is corrections, so is county highway.
Yeah.
But I don't think this county, even when I wasn't a commissioner, ever addressed it, ever addressed it. And it's very frustrating because I've sat where Sheriff Snyder's sitting right now and blows my mind how how the work they do, corrections the same way. It's never rec, it's not recognized. It really is not because there's people that work from home. Uh, there's people that work Monday through Friday, eight to five, and that's not what they get to do, so.
Notice speed, notice speed. And a lot of those positions that he talked about were identified because we were instructed all together to bring it forward.
Yeah.
So it's not.
And, and still Commissioner Hagan's working on it with Michelle.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a group operation there between Michelle and I. So, you know, part of it, notice speed is one direction of making.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what we.
And keep proceeding on.
Yeah.
Keep doing it.
But we have to have commitment to that, you know, it's going to be reviewed. I think that's important.
And it will be, it will be.
Priority of mine, so we'll make sure it doesn't get ticked down.
We're not forgetting the rest of the employees. Not gonna have.
That's right, because I don't want a whole bunch of phone calls and emails.
All right, oh, you'll probably get a email.
Thanks for burning.
All right, is that it, Andy?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, county engineer.
Chairman Ross, members of the board. A couple tidbits for the board, where we have one item on the agenda. Blood is mostly receded. There's where all the damage is less than we had initially thought a few weeks ago when it first started melting, which is great. Can't believe that County Road eighteen, which was from pretty long the Red River from Oslo South, only had one spot went under and it was just a little bit, I mean, very minor, well, going to gravel, way that we're done, is almost nothing to report there. Uh, County Road five got hammered again, south of Manville, but those clothes, a lot of gravel washed out, but that's the extent of most of it is, is just gravel wash. The other part is it's FEMA is is asking for our damages to see if we qualify for reimbursement. So the county minimum is three hundred and twenty four thousand, I believe. So we're trying to gather all that information and it's going to be hard. I don't know if we're gonna make it. So it's gonna be close. So I probably put a lot of effort into detailed estimates, put a lot of effort in upfront just to meet that three hundred and twenty four thousand minimum. On the flip side, last year, a year, year ago, we could take the county damage in two townships when it, you know, it was super easy and we had million dollars of damage, it was easy to qualify. But the challenging part is you know, if one township had a fair amount of damage and they don't get FEMA, it's gonna hurt them. So we really need to try and meet that. We are, we are, and we're working on that, but so that's going on. Uh, County Route twenty five, that was Trail County had their meeting again this morning. It was discussed, no decision was made. Good or bad, they still want to collect more information and so we're still in limbo and and I was, I was asked to be patient and wait another meeting or two, so. Aang or bar. Property that we own now as a county is laying on the ground. We knocked it down yesterday. I know, I told you I didn't want anything to do with it. I told you I'd go out and look at it. Well, anyway, said that to John or superintendent, he goes, oh, we really weren't anything going on Monday. We can't work on bridges. The ground's still frozen and still mucky. We can't replace culvert, so let's go knock it down. Okay. Oh, bye. So it's, we strip the tin off and and recycle, brought that over residual flame on the ground and we worked with the city and they're gonna burn what's left and we're gonna haul the rest, so. We're just, we're gonna take care of it. So it shouldn't be any major expense to the county other than our time and good use for that next later we got, so we're great. I think that's it for tidbits. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, the one item we have on the agenda is the Gilby shed and a few weeks ago now, a month ago, trying to remember, with Commissioner Hagan, Mr. Ruston, myself met with the seller. An offer was made and then there were some power offers back and forth. And we finally came to at least a verbal agreement, well, email agreement as to a selling price and turn it over. You want me to keep going? Okay, the, okay. The agreed upon price of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was tentatively agreed upon by Commissioner Hagan and and Ruston on behalf of the county. Verbally speaking with the seller, if if we approved that, they're still thinking they would want to retain possession until the end of twenty twenty four. They need time to wind the business down. Get, they want to sell inventory. They got a ton of parts on hand. They want to liquidate some of that stuff and they need some time to do that. In the meantime, verbally agreed that our, our employees could use the bathroom. And in the wintertime, we could put some equipment in there to melt off. I mean, that's what we were after. We heated shed and a bathroom is really the two main crutches of why we're doing this.
So your motor grader can go in there, they filed or whatever?
Correct.
It's big. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I've seen it.
It's good size.
Yeah.
The heated shed is about double what our current shed is, so.
Question for the state's attorney.
Go ahead.
Did we analyze this somehow? Purchase contract was commissioned. I was trying to be.
Absolutely, yeah, I was getting there.
Together out of verbal agreement.
Yeah, I was getting there.
We were under, we also made sure that she knew that this had to be brought to the full board and it approved, but we were like hitting the price before we came to.
You know, we didn't want to waste a bunch of people's time. She wants six hundred thousand or something.
Right.
We get, get our minds, it's a good idea to, to more realize it when we can.
Absolutely. So, yeah, there was a question of who puts together the purchase agreement. Uh, who pays closing costs? Are we gonna put the burness money down? Some of those details would need to be worked out. Which I don't.
I, I certainly can work with Mr. West.
Okay, I agree.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, we lost money from the county. I think we're probably good for it because the end of it would make that too high, yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mr. West, who's paying for it? Is it on the highway budget, the three fifty?
It would be, yes, instead of us rehabilitating Gilby shed.
Right.
We would take that money, well, here's my proposal, yeah, plus some of the capital improvement funds that were allocated for the Gilby shed, yeah.
So how much was it to reasonility that Gilby?
Well, I was estimating about three hundred, three fifty, somewhere in there.
Okay.
So we're right in the same ballpark to rehab.
Okay.
And it is.
And whenever we don't have cover, we can take our capital.
Well, Commissioner Ross, if I may, my hope is, is that since we wouldn't be.
A hundred and seventy five dollars a dollar.
I believe so.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy five is what we had.
Yeah, is since we wouldn't purchase it right now, this year, I'd like to take our current money that's allocated to rehabilitate our existing Gilby shed and rebuild the Mandel shed this summer. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, and then in twenty twenty four, we'll do the Northwood shed. And then if we can close, verbally, that we would close January of twenty five on the Alphagar Implement with twenty five money. Is my preliminary thoughts. And then we can get two sheds done this year essentially.
Yeah.
Because we would be able to use that heated shed this coming in play.
Oh, yeah, we wouldn't have any money tied up right now anyway.
That was my thoughts.
Okay. So wishes of the board, what do you want to do? Make a motion to, next, uh, get the state's attorney to draw out paperwork and except, well, then we got, got to figure out closing costs and all that stuff.
When we close on the wet property, it was seventeen hundred bucks and change.
Yeah.
Or eight hundred.
Yeah.
When we did the paperwork ourselves and I helped facilitate it and Haley White, right, helped write the agreement and.
These closing costs aren't like a typical closing though. Or that hire a separate law firm to go do a deed or you guys command all that, right?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's a bit too much of a concern, actually.
So I would imagine the motion needs to be authorized to the state's attorney.
I don't know why you want it.
No, a purchase agreement?
Purchase agreement, that price and to go forward with the two other sheds to use the money that we were going to use in Gilby. Use it in Mandel.
Mandel first. Yeah. Okay, makes the motions, as you said it, Commissioner Hagan. Seconded by, since to me, I'll say, Commissioner Ruston. Okay, um, we're gonna do roll call on this one too. So, Commissioner Ruston. I, Commissioner Hagan. And myself, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, did you want Mr. West to sign off on that purchase agreement? Are you authorizing this part of the motion or should that purchase agreement come back to the full board?
Should come back, should come back to the full board, yeah, to the chair. Okay. For administration.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Staff, we're still working with Grand Sky on that, on the equipment building piece. I was being optimistic and hoping we'd have it here today, but we're not quite there yet. Ms. Leon is actually gonna brief the the commission on the construction engineers are. They are.
There are awesome members of the commission. So on April twenty fourth, the CNR selection committee met to review the singular bid that was received for that from construction engineers. The committee felt that the bid and their proposal was very strong. Everyone filled out a ranking form and they got very numbers. And so the committee moved to unanimously move forward and interview construction engineers for the project. But Miss Swanson pointed out that because there were fewer than three bids received that that needed to be a decision of the commission to decide whether to rebid the project or to move forward with interviewing construction engineers. They did not submit a fee, but they planned to share that during the interview process as was indicated by the CMAR. But we sent out our queue for that. So are there any questions?
We would just have to redo the bid like we just did.
Yes, and so that would push things back significantly. There were, the suggestion of the committee was to not re-interview and to move forward with construction engineers, or not rebid, I apologize, but to move forward with interviewing construction engineers because everyone felt very strongly that it was a strong proposal of CMAR.
I, I can maybe clarify that point, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The statute pertaining to the procurement process for construction managers at risk provides that when we receive less than three bidders, the governing board needs to make a determination if we want to proceed with interviewing only that one or if we want to reopen it up for bidding. I, I don't think the selection committee is recommending that we rebid it. It's just that decision needs to be made by this board. Their recommendation is to present it to the board.
Okay. Comments, any more comments for anybody? Anybody wish to make a motion on that? Second it, sure, Commissioner Hagan seconded. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign motion is carrying now. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the next item is the Grand Forks County New Youth Assessment Center guaranteed, guaranteed maximum, maximum, excuse the price. Uh, so the, the contract between construction engineers in the county requires this guaranteed maximum price. They have submitted the phase one guaranteed maximum price and that is nine million, seven hundred and sixty six thousand, nine hundred and eighty four dollars. As I said, it's for phase one and this is mainly survey work, engineering, architectural design work, concrete work, earthwork, pre, precast structural work. The, the face, there'll be one more coming, Ms. Womstad, Ms. Leon and I did a visit with construction engineers just to make sure we had a handle on this. There should be one more coming. That, that was what was supposed to be on the agenda today was getting ready for those bids. So we're not there yet. So we don't, construction engineers just doesn't have any cost for phase two. So we'll see those in the, in the near future. So what you have today is phase one and needing commission approval to accept it and for chair's signature.
I'm a little curious, there's been no agreement came to yet. For board of the city Speedway. I don't know how we proceed. This, this special, yeah, we had with them and their ownership stake on, I believe, three acres that is tripled.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ruston, I can answer that. The, the lot in question is it would not be built on. Uh, it would be for staging. Yes, we're still talking to the Fair Board in the Speedway. Um, I've been corresponding with a member of the Fair Board, even coming up with different, Mr. Ross as well. Different rounds so that the Speedway will have access, racers, trucks, crews will have access to their pits. We proposed a couple of routes. We, we, back we got when it's hot off the presses, we'll be meeting with the Fair Board in the Speedway tomorrow to present the fact there, there's some members here. there's some members here tonight, actually. We'll we'll be proposing that to them tomorrow night to to make sure we're mitigating those, mitigating those concerns. The currently, one of the procurement of that law would not prohibit this work commencing. So it's it's a it's a commission decision if you want to, if you want to approve this tonight. I think if it's not approved, work just holds and we get further behind and cost will increase. Just feels like heart before the horse until we've got.
Well, the construction does not interfere with that lot, too.
Yeah, but. I don't know, some of us feel right about it, like proceeding with the project before we have all the land necessary, whether it interferes or not, I guess that'd be my, sir. You know that. Alternative routes for the semis to bring the race cars and doing all the the logistically work or not. I just feel like there's other conversations to be had. Doesn't mean to play it, you know, like deputy salaries, you know, here's many, you know, another few talks, I mean, for meeting tomorrow where they are with Mr. Ford. Airport. Seems to me that they maybe come up with something by then, be lucky, but I can't support moving forward quite yet without their blessing. We might be, in my opinion, good neighbors who come up with something. We both walk away shaking hands, feeling like we both, both the county, the Fair Board, and River City Speedway. Were treated fairly and don't have to take a big hit. I mean, the economic hit, if we screwed up the races to this community, would be pretty significant. I know you're a fan of the Bob. Probably test the rest, they draw, you know. That's all. I I just think it's soon, I don't know that we've got all the eyes on this particular piece, especially in light of those three acres not even being county properties. One, one suggestion, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ruston, is appreciating where the commissioner is coming from. He could delay the vote and wait for the meeting tomorrow night, and if everyone walks away happy, could request a special commission meeting just for this matter to to get it approved, move forward. Again, the commission's decision will be on.
If you're comfortable with that, to hear what they have to say tomorrow at their meeting, and then just do like you did with the the secret, just a quick Zoom call.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, makes sense. Yeah.
Very good. We'll we'll proceed that way then. Our thoughts, my marching order.
Chair.
This question with, uh, are the commissioners going to be able to come out there, most of them? Because I think there's a real need to understand how that property is used.
Yes.
Could you state your name?
Here in a ball, I'm looking at Grand Forks Fair Board and River City Speedway. So my challenge is, is for the commissioners and those that haven't been out there to come out and see how that tract of land actually works during fair, during big race events. It's one thing to have access to the pit area, it's quite another to lose the significant amount of land. There's probably if I ran a a wheel correctly, there's probably somewhere in the areas of uh, two hundred thousand square feet that we're not going to be able to use, right? I mean, we might be able to cross the road, but space is used every Friday night during the fair, during our big events. And we're just losing more real estate.
Is he parking or what?
For parking primarily for patrons. And so my challenge to the commission would be to come out and let's talk about how this property is used.
Reasonable.
At the end of the day, um, my my other concern would be is if this is phase two, when the space restarts. Right? I mean, at some point in time, as the entire fairgrounds, we just can put razor wire around it. So, thank you for your time. Hope to see you tomorrow.
Yes.
I think it's important to note, um, that if the commission wanted to have a G E with the Fair Board, it would need.
If we have more than two commissioners in the area, it would have to be. Five thirty-one. Out at the fairgrounds. Office, wouldn't it be just an informational meeting, though? It is no discussion is had concerning what could be done. Can't take a tour.
Do we all want to go there before having the next special meeting, if that maybe you want, we can be able to get rid of that?
If 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 this helps, so the point of tomorrow night's meeting is for the county to propose some some measures to the Speedway and the Fair Board on how we're going to address their concerns. Any any proposal that that by me or for the chair put forward can't be approved anyways until if if they agree to it. I'm fighting this cold, losing my voice again. Anything that we bring to the Speedway or the Fair Board, you know, we can offer it, can, but you all, we still have to bring it back to all you anyways to approve it.
Yeah, it still looks like an open meeting.
So so that's what I'm saying, sir, is we're offering some, okay, we're, the county will do X, Y, and Z. Is that acceptable to if you, yes, maybe coming back to you as a body to say, we've met, here's what we need to do, this is the price. And every proposal that we're going to put out, uh, it's going to increase the construction price if I'm being candid. It's all gonna, it's just gonna go up. So can't commit to anything, but all of you as a body have to make those final decisions. So I I don't, I I don't see how it's not an open meeting tomorrow if there's.
So you are going for sure.
I'm going. I can go. Mark's going to.
So one other.
And I can't, I've got a prior commitment here, I'll just go.
I'm I'm not committing to it yet. I'm just wondering because I'm making sure that we're not going outside of.
Yeah, well, I can go anytime. So tomorrow, five thirty works better for Cynthia or Dave, or you can really, I can go. Well, that's what it is. It's five thirty.
Five thirty or zero.
Five thirty. I'm just talking about from the information standpoint of the usage of the.
Mr. Oval was talking about, just wanted to show us the, not necessarily be at the meetings, that's my accurate description.
Very good. Uh, thank you. Then so we're tabling that one. Um, next is J L G courthouse improvement and we're asking Ms. Leon to take that one, well.
There are also members of the commission. Uh, if you remember, we sent out, uh, J L G sent out it's for the Grand Forks County security updates to the courthouse, and those came back in much higher than the original cost, about two and a half times. We see those numbers, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand and five hundred and seventy-six thousand about, and the original project was budgeted for about two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, following the meeting that we had with J L G, with the building, construction engineers reached out to J L G to propose a reduced scope project at a price of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, which would remove uh, the voice enunciation system piece of the project because they assessed that where the higher price was coming from, given that there each each organization or company only was able to receive one bid for the electrical work. And then given that it is it is an older building, that often means that the electrical costs are higher, and they never took a walk through these companies. So they just seemingly overbid it or bid it at a very high price. And so this piece, this hundred ninety-five thousand would still meet uh, the protective area at the courthouse entrance. So it's on the kevlar, the glass paneling that would be protective, the entrapment entry. And that would allow us to move forward with this project with the grant that we received from the state within the year. If not, we would just have to step back from the project. But it's it is the commission's wish to move forward with this one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars bid for that piece of the project. The commission would need to consider a motion to um, reject all the bids received on this project, specifically those from construction engineers and structures, Inc. Uh, on the basis that the bids all exceed the initially estimated costs of the original project by a specific amount. And then, so your options would be to accept, if if you were to reject those bids, it'd be to accept the proposal by construction engineers paying approval of the change for the grant, because we do have to make sure the state is comfortable with that change. Um, another option would be to solicit solicit proposals from both prior bidders uh, for that narrow scope of the project, or to publicly bid or solicit multiple proposals uh, from the contractors for the new project based on new specifications.
Let me share again, the county's share of that lower project would be the forty-eight thousand, seven fifty.
That is correct, yes, in that letter that I sat in front of all of you, that would be if we decided to move forward construction engineers or the project in general and just rebid it. That would be the cost of county. I believe the original cost of the county was about fifty-six because that original number was higher, um, so that would reduce.
Really sample it. Believe this would be a significant upgrade, but there.
Oh, yeah.
And so make logical sense, and we don't have to rebid when it's under two hundred thousand. Yeah, so it looks like a good plan to me.
Yeah. All right, so wishes of the board.
I'll make a motion to reject the two higher bids and accept the base bid one ninety-five. Yep, construction area is taking out those electronic voice devices or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. For a second, second by Commissioner Hagan. All right, assuming a roll call vote, I think we'll do this again because we're talking money. Uh, it's your first day, I.
I.
I. I and myself, right? unanimously.
There are also members of the commission. Uh, then another piece of this in a letter that I placed in front of you all. Uh, that would be a letter that we would send to the um, committee, the grant committee at the state level. And when we reached out to them about potentially changing the project scope, um, they asked for reasoning and then how we plan to address the change. So would we plan to uh, just abandon the other piece of the project or will we plan to move forward, get a piece of the project in the future? And so one option would be to vote to potentially commit to pursuing that voice enunciation system in the future. I know that the courts would like to pursue that in twenty twenty-four if there was a potential to, and I don't want to, so Haley, please stop me if any of this is not allowed. Uh, but I think that we would have a better chance of being allowed to continue with this project from the state if we show a plan to address that emergency voice system in the future. And so um, I would hope that we could make it the intent of this body to pursue that piece in our twenty twenty-four budget or as part of twenty twenty-four capital improvements at some point. And then also, just to make a grant proposal for that piece. Um, J L G did say that they thought that if we were to uh, put a longer timeline on the voice emergency system piece and give electrical engineer bidders more time to plan for the project in all of the other pieces of work that they have going on. And then if we were to allow for them to make sure that they did a walk through the county courthouse, they anticipated that the the cost of that would be significantly lower than what was reflected in the bids that you all just rejected. Great, so you need a motion to include that in your which is permissible for me to say that the commission would be dedicated to pursuing that other piece, the emergency voice.
Not, you would just. Physically, the intent to consent.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to make sure I have approval from all of you before I say that that is something that you wish to pursue.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Here's the last thing I have. I I again, I'll reiterate my apology for the eleventh hour, submitted, I emailed before earlier this afternoon and laid on on your desk, uh, copy for a a RFQ for the dome architectural services, if you recall last last meeting, we had to reject the last one. And so what you have in front of you, I worked on it with Ms. Womsted, uh, to make sure that that we have it where we should have it in industry standards. So uh, need commission approval on on the presented. Well, to move forward with this type of RFQ, this is just a trial. But essentially, to follow the procurement uh, policy with North Dakota Century Code. And and uh, sorry, I'm struggling tonight. Excuse me. So just to move forward and follow Century Code, um, we would want to have a a selection committee. So we put out the RFQ similar to the C M A R process. This this team who I I have in here as as Chairman Ross is the governing body, Mr. West as the engineer, and Mr. Gieschewski as facilities management. Um, they'll they'll form the selection and interview committee, will work with them to define the scope, to define the dates, the requirements, prepare the formal invitation. As all, what I need from the board is is a motion to essentially allow staff move forward with this type of RFQ and bring that selection interview team together, move forward.
That will shoot. Commissioner Hagan makes the motion, I'm second, Commissioner Ruston. Almost in favor, same five, same nine. Oh, same side motion is carrying now. Chair. State's attorney.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, I have provided to each of you uh, a citizen comment policy. Just a sample for the review. In visiting with Commissioner Ruston and doing some legal research, um, we discussed whether it might be worth exploring, um, coming up with a policy, providing some procedures and policies for when citizens can address the board, um, just to ensure that meetings stay on track and follow orderly process. This is just information for you to digest should you wish to uh, look to establishing a policy like that. Um, I have visited with Commissioner Ruston, and I'd be happy to visit with any one of you regarding any questions you might have if you want to look to creating a policy such as this.
Probably a good idea to get ahead of the game on some of these things.
Yeah. I do think, though, that comment periods need to have a time limit.
Oh, yeah.
You know, uh, I've seen what happened to city council, and that's unbelievable. So, uh, I would think as far as the comments go, they, the duration can't be any longer than five minutes. We have to have a timer. A timekeeper.
And we can't, we can't have thirty people in the singles, they take five minutes, you know, I mean, now, you have to have some common sense.
Yeah.
So. We don't.
Mr. Chair.
This is how it works.
Members of the board, just to give you an idea of uh, some of the limitations that could be put in place should we wish to pursue a policy such as this, um, there can be time limitations. There can be subject matter limitations such as we limit comments to the items on the agenda. There can be limitations to the 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 nature of the comments made and what you you can't uh, have policies. They need to be content neutral, but you can, you know, if they make threats, if they become violent, you know, criteria like that where they could be excluded from the meeting if they do exhibit those types of.
We don't have ordinance ability like the city does, it's a violation of ordinance.
Yeah, but we're our, we have home rule. We could, we haven't done, so, no, but we can, we can.
So I think what the city relies on. Thankfully, I don't think they have had to, but. The the standard of disorderly conduct, they do have disorderly conduct in city ordinance. But we likewise have disorderly conduct in state. We could use a similar standard.
All right, informational area, okay. Anything else? Any reports, Mr. Mr. Rust.
I'm P O, there's really nothing new there, it's kind of broken up here and. Pretty much already covered everything that the Fair Board is interested in, so there's no reason to go on.
Okay. Right.
Just the library board meeting, nothing new, I guess, other than. Purchasing vans with the. Giving Hart State money that we received. The, forgive me, I can't remember what bill it was, but it was vetoed, the book ban. That was, was. About, I don't know how many hours it would have taken, the library, they would have to, had to close to go through all their books and whatnot.
How did it end up?
The governor beat out of it.
So was it really?
Unless some, I mean. From the last. Okay. The other thing that they are doing is they're. Necessarily a policy, but last June, they did display a flight, like, out in on the flight pool. There was some citizen comments at the last meeting about if we're going to allow it for one group, I would like to have. My flag, you know, on flight phone as well, so the staff has recommended, oh, Wendy, the director has recommended that you're only going to fly the United States flight, one flight. So, but other than that. The children's museum, the children's center in the library will be opening a bunch.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Not much, just a brick meeting, but that I attended that too this morning, we're talking about. The funding that we see from the legislature and it's, we were cut from where we wanted that to be for Grant Sky, for example. And. We're going to be making a trip or two somewhere along the line this year to get in front of. Various commanders and one of the commander of the sixteenth Air Force who invited us to come see them. So those are just plans in the future at the moment.
All right, I had a brick meeting this morning too with. Mister Ford and Graceland, so. At several meetings with. Oh, West with the racetrack. All that stuff which we'll cover tomorrow night and other than that. Pretty much it for me. All right, so we are up to unfinished new business, some money I see on the screen. Yes. Okay.
Under correspondence, we have two information bases, first being the amount we received for purchasing card rebate. For more weeks, more yet, and it's statewide, so it's it's not like one percent like the Discover card, so it's slightly greater than one percent. But we don't know exactly what it's going to be, because we don't know what the rough states.
Yeah, shields card, you could buy shields.
How it goes to it. Missouri River Joint Water Board.
Commissioner Hagan.
You've got a board on that.
The board charger.
Right now.